Please remain standing. Let's have a moment of silence for our brave men and women in all services, EMS, police, everybody that helps us with the troops and where locally. God bless them and those that have given their ultimate protection.
I'd like to announce that this meeting is being livestreamed. Chairman's report. The board met an executive session for a personnel matter and a police labor matter prior to tonight's meeting. We have received the resignation of Lori Kier, who is on our zoning hearing board and previously was on planning commission. We are sorry to see her go. If anybody is interested in a position on zoning hearing board, please send, you know, send in an application and we will be doing interviews.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. Rick, do we have anybody that we interviewed before that we should contact?
No, but we will, we'll post it and put those on web page.
Are we all out?
Not, not working. I was just wondering about that. I see this run. Did you push the mute button?
Yep, there we go. Locking it?
Mine's on.
No. So now... Jada, check your kill button. Make sure you didn't kill it.
John has...
Move button's off.
But the...
I had to kill button. So I just...
Your, your, the ring was lit?
Yeah.
Mine is not.
Mine is not.
Uh-oh, we have to adjourn. Speak loudly. I think what it is, Madam Chairman, the knowledge end of the table, which is the extreme, my right, has power. The fictitious part of the board starts with Mr. Shane and goes all the way up.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. They're all, they're back up. Might have been close. Mine's on.
Mine's not.
While we're playing around with microphones, Lori Kier has approached one person who is an attorney who is, she would like to, she's recommended and supported for the zoning hearing board.
They'll submit it.
He's active.
Okay, good.
David, is yours not working?
No.
And where's mine?
Mine's not, mine's not either. Okay, I'll talk loud.
Good. Go.
All right. Another, Jason Lang is an extremely valuable member of our staff on, as far as our park and rec department and all the work he does with the park and the playground and so forth. And due to his efforts, plus the efforts of the Park and Rec Board and Public Works, we have received the 2019 PRPS Parks and Rec Department of the Year Award. And this, I know Jason is very proud of this because it is not just what we did this year. It is, looks back over five years of effort through all these different groups within the township. And we are very proud of all those ABCs and Jason for doing such a great job.
Yep. That's a, that's a very special award, so the recognition, it's broader, you know, it recognizes a lot of volunteers, recognizes the Parks and Recreation Board, certainly Jason's work and the staff, so, and it just shows how rich and vibrant our program is. There we go.
There's a connection in back of ex-chairman Shane's chair.
Good.
Okay.
So, very special award and a lot, really great congratulations to Jason, the Parks and Recreation Board, all the volunteers, the township staff, and the East Ocean Township. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a great recognition.
I agree.
Okay, I'll open the meeting to public comments on non-agenda items. Does anyone have anything? Okay, we'll move on. There are no emergency services reports at this meeting. We move on to the minutes. This, today we are looking at the minutes of January 12th, which was our annual meeting, and February 19th. Are there any comments?
I had simply offered out one minor, I had offered one minor edit.
I, I, I think, and, and next year, as I said, this will be streamlined, you know, it looks like comments were just publicly comment or, or speeches were just copied.
It was a transcript.
This is inappropriate, so we'll, we'll do a better job.
It was, it was a very informative set of minutes, so I have to say, it was very informative for the average person.
One question on the, on the 19th, we're going to get down here to 45. Appreciate your sentence to read. Marty commented about playbooks. Wait, maybe it's lengthy, but if you don't make that, it's not a type.
Do we do it?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to the minutes.
I'll second.
Any comments? Any comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Treasurer's report, February 28.
I had, Madam Chairman, I had a couple of questions that I sent on one, but it would not keep us from approving the bills, something that I'll talk on offline, possibly tomorrow or Thursday. So, does anybody have any questions on any of the items in the treasurer's report?
I do not.
I do not.
There are a couple of corrections that were made. I don't know who initialled these, I don't know if it's Mark Miller or, but I did look at these. So, Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we graciously accept the receipts and we pay the bills as in our list, once approved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Comments? Comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
It, it's worth noting of the, one of the series of invoices that are in here relates to road salt, just so you can appreciate how much salt does cost to maintain our roads during winter events. The current invoice here totals just about $25,000 for 400 tons of salt. So, winter maintenance is an expensive business.
You know, I, I guess we ought to make comment on, because I've been asked this question to everybody. We don't grind if we think it's going to rain. We don't grind if we, if they think it's going to rain because it washed away. So, last day, these couple storms, you didn't see any brine in the street, and the reason you didn't is because it was supposed to rain initially, and sometimes they guess right, sometimes they guess wrong, but the simple fact of the matter is, you're only going to get brine when I think it's just going to be snowbait for the kickoff.
Which makes sense. Okay, there is no old business on the agenda, we'll go to new business and consider a recommendation on community day activities. Do you want to do it? We've got a memo from the Park and Rec.
Jason went back out and shopped the prices and vendors for community day. We're going back with international fireworks, they were the lowest best quote, and they've done it for the last several years. And then the inflatables are one point, one...
One stop.
...party shop. He would like your approval to direct to accept the proposal from both of those vendors.
Madam Chairman, I move to select international fireworks and one stop party shop for the above listed community day services, being the fireworks and the inflatable.
Is there a second?
Second. I've got a question, just, it's really a question, just for, to realize, assuming you did, I didn't realize the fireworks were less than 20 minutes. There's a, down there under the second floor, and I made a note of that, and it seems, it's not a long time, but at the same time, I don't know how much we, our residents should expect, but to get an awful lot of cars that come in for fireworks, it just seems like fifteen or sixteen minutes is, is not a really long time. I realize that there's a function of cost that is, but that's really seems to me that, and fireworks were very good, Mr. Smith, because I was there.
I thought they were great last night.
And it, it, it did seem short, but I don't know if we've got any blowback or not, but it just seems weird to me that it's only 15 to 16 minutes.
Well, I, you know, I've heard, you know, I, I haven't heard anything about it, but you know, as, as, as we go, as things go in society today, keeping people's attention, I don't care whether they're things exploding in the sky or not, 20 minutes is a long time. You know, and how many, how many people line up to watch, you know, one of the NASA rockets take off? I mean, that's, you know, you wait around and then it takes two minutes and then it's done. You do the same thing when a bridge is imploding too, I mean, you know, it's, it's not worth that long, you wait in line to see it.
Somewhere in here, when I was reading through it, they talked about having a condensed of...
Yeah, Jason referred it as a condensed display of 15 to 16 minutes, in keeping with the much lauded performance from '17. So apparently people liked, liked yours and it was a condensed.
Well, the, the idea of condensed is instead of having one and then another, they come right one after another, and I think people do, it keeps their interest, and I think that's something that people do like.
I, I, I agree with that, and, and I have to share with you a childhood memory of the fireworks displays that occurred at Norberg, you, many years ago, and they would have the one, one gentleman who, who would narrate each shot that went off, and it was okay, that was like a minute, can we have the shot? So, condensed is a good thing when you're looking for booms.
Hey, Mike, I could do that.
Oh, yes, you could, with your team.
Okay, are there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. Okay. The Westchester Cog has approved an issuance of an RFP for renewable energy planning services, under which the consultant would prepare an energy transition plan to achieve 100% renewable electricity by 2035 and 100% renewable energy for all uses in the Westchester area by 2015. Prior to having...
2050.
2050, sorry. Prior to making any decision on this, our, you know, accepting the proposal, we are, we would like to have our sustainability advisory committee review it and offer comments, because that's why the committee is there.
So, Madam Chairman, I'd like to suggest we table action tonight on this. The sustainability advisory committee has been charged with reading the RFQ and the RFP and making a recommendation to the board. They'll be meeting on March 25th, and they'll be prepared to make a recommendation so that we can take action on April 2nd, or meeting on April 2nd.
I'll second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, for public.
I...
I disagree. The, reading through this, and I've been the one that's been involved in the meetings, it seems to me, and I don't, I'm going to ask you a question, this is not a comment, is, it, it sounds like, or feels like, that we decide what we want to do in these various areas, within various areas, and they put something together. Now, I don't know if that's the right takeaway from this. I read it all, and I must admit, some I understood and some I didn't, but it just seemed to me that the advisory committee and, and the going back and forth has a lot more to do with us creating what, what we think should be created, and then they put it together. Is that, am I assuming that to be correct?
Marty, you're, you're picking up, and Rick will kind, because he's, he's very articulate on this as well, but part, some of my ambivalence, first of all, I'm supportive of the project at the cog level and for the member municipalities funding it, approving it and, and funding it, so we can go forward and prepare this. It's really a groundbreaking effort by local government, and we've got to start somewhere, it's important. But I had raised the question, brought it up at the sustainability committee meeting last week, and I've, I've mentioned it in some emails. There are some very important early steps in this process that have to do with one, appointing an advisory board or an advisory committee. There are intake interviews with stakeholders. Stakeholders have to be identified and commit to possibly serving on the advisory committee. And there are a couple other steps that involve collecting information to create the mix of where we want to go with this. And I said to the group that if we don't do that effectively in the beginning of this study, it will end up not being an energy transition plan for the Westchester Area Council of Governments, it will be an energy transmission, transition plan by Cadmus, a very large consulting firm. It is fundamentally absolutely essential that those early steps be effectively implemented, affected, so that we have a very vibrant advisory body and that these interviews that set up where this plan is going to go or how it's going to look are, are vibrant and there's good information in them. So, what you're saying, Marty, is, is kind of what I've been reading from the, from the get-go on this plan, because it is brand new. I also thought that Rick, in responding to Carol DeWolf, who is the Chair of the Westtown Board of Supervisors, Rick gave a very good explanation to her the other day about the goals of this plan, which I, I said, I wish I committed the memory, I have it here and I can read it, but it talks about the goals of this plan, and I think it is, it is only, you know, if you, if you set these broad goals of, of 100% renewable by 2035 and then 2050, by everything renewable by 2050, they're, they're monstrous goals, and, and all this planning effort is going to do is begin to help us organize what energy trans, transition means. There'll be short-term, midterm, long-term goals, and as Rick has aptly stated, we want to go for the lowest hanging fruit right off the bat and accomplish some, some, some wins once this plan is put together. The other thing, Marty, is that the schedule that Cadmus has, was put in front of us as the consultant, a big-time consultant, is a four-month schedule to complete this plan. I think it's optimistic, we may have some flexibility to extend that, I think we're going to need to. I, I see it taking a couple months just to get these, this advisory group committed, signed up to, and then begin to develop what these, these interview sessions, these intake sessions are going to be all about. I, you know, they, they had a, the schedule is from something to August, if I'm not mistaken, what was it, April or May to August, something like that, and I, I just don't know how we can do it in that short amount of time, but, but I think it's, it's something we should do. The fact that it's being done by the cog makes it affordable, $75,000 for one municipality, too much, and we have too much to learn. There are also other municipalities and other entities watching what we're doing, Bradner Township, a couple others were mentioned that are, that are interested in what this is going to look like, and, and we're, we're not taking a chance, but there is going to be some real evolution here in all our knowledge base, as well as what this plan is going to look like. Hopefully, it's not going to be a regional effort that sits on the shelf, but it's a first stage at what we're looking at as a new version of a comprehensive plan. So, those early steps, though, I think are really important.
I appreciate the comment. I, I know it was implying that it wasn't something that should be done, I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting things correctly, and, and I am, because I, there was a lot of emphasis on the beginning about what it took to get the things set up. The other thing that I want to throw out there, and this is just because it's going to start up again, Pennsylvania is going to continue to push for the use of natural gas, and this includes generation of electricity in particular, products that use natural gas like water heaters and so forth and so on. It's going to also improve probably, if they pass it, and I think they will, about helping atomic plants, nuclear plants, to stay here, and it's thought that that's part of the mix in, in alternative energy in terms of the fact that it doesn't generate carbon, carbon backlash. The question I have, and that kind of, of information, or that kind of awareness, or that kind of red light, or whatever you want to call it, I didn't see that in here. So, I'm saying to myself, in a state of Pennsylvania, which may be different than other states because of the Marshall Shale, they are, based on what I can tell, they're going to try to maximize the output of that to the extent that they possibly can, which says to me that you've got to be careful when picking dates for certain things, not that those things aren't important, but I'm not sure that they're going to be realistic at the moment, because it seems like to me, you're going to have a heck of a time getting started on some of this stuff because of the push on natural gas and, and the nuclear generation, which is a big part of component of the energy use.
That's the point, Marty.
So, I'm just, I, I don't see that in here, but it seems to me it has to be a cautionary remember, reminder, otherwise I, I would be, you have to cut us that dates because you have to have targets, but I'd be really careful in somehow caveating this because there's too much we don't know.
The, the, the reason for the four-month schedule was because when we looked at it from the, the beginning, assuming we, the board gets, we go through the plan and the plan is approved, we anticipate that there may be costs incurred to implement some of the plan, so we wanted to make sure that we had that information available for the municipalities when they planned their budget for 2020. So, you're correct, we could slide back the, you know, instead of four months, make it take five or six months, the, and, and we could, we could do that. The downside is we may, you may not have pretty good numbers in for your 2020 budget.
Yeah, you may.
But that, that was the rationale for why we tried to keep the thing moving at all.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, Rick.
And you're right, the, the, one of our biggest challenges is we're at the bottom of the rulemaking hierarchy in Pennsylvania. We do not have the power to mandate that business communities convert to renewable energy. We have to educate the people, educate the business community. We, we have, there are a lot of challenges with doing this, as Michael noted, it's probably it's one of the first ones that will be done in Pennsylvania, and I would also anticipate that it'll probably be, won't be the last. We're talking about something, it's 16 years from now, I would anticipate that maybe eight or 10 years from now, we may be looking at the update of things, because technology will have changed. But again, the recommendation that the cog has put together is that for municipalities to proceed, and, and we're going to get a way to the sustainability committee.
Let me, let me make a comment, Dave, about the sustainability committee. I don't think there's any thought that they would not consider doing this, there's, I would think that their role is more tweaking.
Yeah, that, that was one of the comments I was going to make, is I think their role is to look at the RFQ and the RFP and make comments, you know, for instance, my one comment was, can we look at, you know, I've been talking about the virtual power purchase agreements for a while since I learned about them, and is that part of this project? So I want to, and that would be a question that I would, I would want to consider. So, I, I would think that they're not just going to say, yeah, we should spend the, the money to fund the program, they're going to look at the, at the RFP and RFQ and make comments about it to the board.
That's what we were talking about.
Yeah, I was thinking was that I know West, Whitehaven has already proved this, and it seems to me that like a lot of things, people kind of look to see what we do before they take any action. I don't know why it would be inappropriate to allocate, to vote to allocate the funds for this now, because I don't, I think the sustainability committee should provide comments, but I don't think it's going to disrupt whether or not we, we agree that this is a good project and should be done. So rather than holding it up or stopping perhaps others from doing something to get this thing going, which gets back to the four-month thing, I would think that it would be appropriate to make a motion tonight to, to, to move forward with this project and accept the payment schedule that's laid out in the document. Now, I'm, I'm not as familiar with what's going on as you and Blanket Rick are, but it just seems to me it wouldn't be harmful to do that tonight.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree, I guess the, would the motion be to approve the, the funds, and then we can go back to the sustainability committee and ask them for input, that we can use this feedback into, into the cog regarding the project going forward, to make some comments.
Maybe we should ask the guru down at the end there and see if he agrees with that.
Well, my question...
You're, you're going to spend, I mean, I don't have, I don't have, you put on...
It's our share, 13.
I mean, 14. You're going to spend money eventually, I presume, so I think if, if you're concerned about timing, then you go ahead and do it now with, with what Marty suggested, if you want to defer to the sustainability commission, and you're not worried about timing, defer to the...
I don't think...
Six or one half thousand, the other.
I don't think one meeting for sustainability is going to, going to affect anything if we hold off with April 2nd, when they have a, I would say that we, we wait, why, why push the bullet until the sustainability...
You're taking this one with us today because you're a nurse.
No, the, the sustainability committee meets on the fourth Monday of the month, so they will meet on the fourth Monday in March, which means they would have your recommendation in time for your meeting on April 2nd.
April 2nd.
If you act on April 2nd, then we will meet the cog meeting on April 25th. We, we, the 25th, when we, when we set it up, we wanted to make sure that to the extent possible, municipalities had almost two full months to consider this.
I, I don't, I don't think either way's a problem. I think we're going to approve this, and I think the sustainability is going to give us appropriate comments, but it's not going to stop us from doing it, it's not going to stop us from spending money.
But we may, we may make adjustments or comments and, or request that, that there be changes to the RFP. I would, we set up the sustainability committee because these are people with certain areas of expertise, and I certainly would like to hear what they have to say before taking a vote. I, I agree, there's, we will, there, there's very little doubt that we won't support it, but we may support it with tweaking.
Whatever, 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 for first. I can go either way, it just seemed to me that based on what Mike said, losing a month cuts into your, you know, just, which you back, back...
It's, it's not going to put it because, again, the cog is, nothing can, and nothing's going to happen before April 20th anyway because of the cog.
Yeah, the only thing that would, the only thing that would sway me to vote for the funding tonight is that I think we, you know, we would send a message as we join another township that we're in favor of funding it, and the committee could still do their work in providing input into the, into the project. So, that's an important aspect of it, to join one other township early on to encourage others to, to do this, I think that'd be fine.
Well, in, in that case, I'm going to put a motion out there and if there's...
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, there's already a motion? Who made the motion?
David, yeah, motion to table until the sustainability commission, promise I...
David, yeah, motion to table until the Sustainability Commission comes in.
You gotta vote on the first, you have to, can I have a motion for it on?
Okay.
First of all, before we vote, do you have a comment?
No.
No, I, I got my-
The motion is the table.
There's a motion on the floor to table it for another month. All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the motion did not pass. Is there another motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board agreed to fund the East Goshen portion of the Council of Governments' RFP with cadence for, in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, and charge the Sustainability Task Force in providing input into the projects as goes forward.
I would second that.
Any comments?
Thank you.
I would just like to mention that I, I still believe we should wait for our Sustainability Committee to look at it. I don't think it's going to affect us, it's not gonna be a negative, just personal reflection.
Anything? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Wait, can I clarify? Did you, so you voted, what was the vote on the first motion?
Zero.
But Carmen, you voted against that first motion, and this-
I did not vote.
So, it was oh-four with Carmen abstaining?
I don't think Janet voted either.
Okay, oh-three.
This one was four-one, right?
Yes.
Four-one. Four-one.
Thank you.
Okay, next. We, we have, we budgeted nine thousand dollars in the Capital Reserve Fund to replace a utility trailer. The existing trailer is unusable and has zero salvage value. And we have three bids. Proline trailers for six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents, TP trailers for ten thousand, six hundred dollars, and intercon equipment for twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I'd just like to say, I wish we had this kind of ratio of what we budgeted, of what it's gonna cost for every project that we have.
Me, too.
I would, Madam Chairman, I would move, we purchased and replaced the utility trailer from Proline trailers in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I will second that, I would also ask, as part of the motion, that we see if our local scout troop or anybody may have use for the vehicle, even though it has no salvage value, that if we can do a benefit to a nonprofit, especially in our township.
Well, good idea, Carmen.
We'll check with Mark. We'll stay on track.
Yeah, I'm the same.
Any other comments?
I have a question. So, I've purchased two trailers in my lifetime, and I know there's different qualities. So, when we do these bids, do we send out specs around the trailer, are they the same trailer?
It's not, they're not, it's, just to clarify, they're not, they're not bids, this was just price quotes, because we're under the bid threshold here. So, this is just Mark going around and saying, you know, there's apples and oranges comparisons here, I think, it's not the same.
Okay, thank you.
I think, David, Rick, or John, correct me, I think the threshold is somewhere, what are we, around between seventy-five hundred and nineteen thousand?
Nineteen, so under, so nineteen thousand is the bid threshold.
Right.
And then we could just go to Co-Stars, up the threshold. But then, technically, above ten thousand, you need to have three price quotes.
Three ten-ones with your price quotes, yeah.
Any other comments from the table?
Madam Chairman, I do have one. I'm sure, Mark checked this, that this is not available under Co-Stars, because I know the state buys trailers.
This is the cheapest price, period. Yeah, if it wouldn't, if it wouldn't have been available to Co-Stars, he would have went there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Brian Sweet, six-four-six, Meadow Drive. I saw it.
Please, push the button up.
Brian Sweet, six-four-six, Meadow Drive. I saw it on the proposal that we have to go to Virginia and pick the trailer up. So, are there, right, that's, so are there costs associated with that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we'd be driving, we'd be driving, you know, a pickup truck.
It's not thousands of dollars, but it should be part of it.
Yeah, so it would be, you know, let's say, another, to Roanoke, yeah, well, a point five-five round trip, you're talking, what is that, about two hundred dollars? Plus, you know, another three, you know, a hundred dollars for incidentals. And, yeah, so, I mean, you're, Brian, you're absolutely right, it still doesn't get them close.
No, it's not, it's just-
Yeah, no, you're right.
There's other charges.
Yeah, there is an absolute cost to that. I thought about that when I looked at it, too, Brian, and, yeah. Okay, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. Okay, Rick has explained this to me, and-
The launch question. Okay, so we got a grant from the Mayor for the Sunoco money, and we presented, and we presented our project to DEP, DCNR, we showed that a match, that we're putting some money into it. Well, the project doesn't require a match. Well, that confuses them up there, because now we're showing a match, it's not required. So, we said, well, how do we know we got money? But it's not, we needed money. So, the walkway was, we need a motion to authorize John to write a letter confirming that we have the three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars of match money, that's not required. And we already have the money, because we borrowed the money for the dam. So, again, it's, the fact that there was a change, and they had a program where they didn't require a match, and DCNR just, they didn't have a handle.
That's why I had Rick describe it.
Because we showed a match, the simple solution was just to confirm that the board has the money available.
I have a question, and it doesn't affect the vote to whom sent the letter, to say that we have matching funds, even though we don't need matching funds. In the document, it is referred to the DEP Mariner Two Grant, is this the grant from the-
Sunoco money.
It said, well, I want to clarify, is it from the penalties that they say?
Yes, yes, absolutely, and I'm over David on this. This should not be called the Mariner Two East Grant. And we need to be very clear in future correspondence, that this, that's not what this is, this is.
I think the motion should be made stating that.
What, what do you mean?
The motion should be made stating-
Well, it is-
No, I will, I will make the motion. I move to authorize three hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars in matching funds to be utilized in conjunction with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar Department of, the DEP grant to fund improvements associated with the dam's transformation into Park's East Goshen project.
Is there a second?
Second. Hey, Rick, I know we got a, I can believe it was a five-hundred-dollar grant, but someone's all in line for this dam. Is that the only other one besides this that's granted?
No, we got this one, this was three fifty, I think there's another three hundred dollars.
Yeah, we have four grants all totaled for the dam.
Working our way well along to the-
Yes, we have, as, what I was talking about when we do the budget option, we're now in a situation where we have, you know, additional money from those bond proceeds that the board, in the future, once we're finished all these projects, and everything comes in and close the budget, either the board will need to make a decision on how to reallocate that.
Or refund the money, or refund the unused bond proceeds. And we're gonna have a clarification in the minutes, and to reference if this is, if this isn't a grant per se from Sunoco, it's enforcement fund.
It's a DEP grant. It's funded, the grant is funded from enforcement funds against Sunoco.
I just, keeping up appearances, I just don't want somebody to start jumping on the bandwagon, it'll be two grants.
Any other comments from the board? Comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
I want to go back, I just wanna-
It's passed.
I just wanna, I think it's, given, given the seriousness of what we're talking about, and I'm not sure I picked this up, are we gonna modify this, this letter, so that it shows up as-
There is no, there is no grant program called DEP Mariner Two Grant Project.
No, I'm saying, we should modify this.
I will write the letter to reflect the fact that the proper name of the DEP grant, which I don't know without, but it's not called, it's not called the Mariner Two-
Whatever grant program it's called.
I agree, I agree with you, I don't know. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I have one other item under due business. This evening, in executive session, the board interviewed Edward Kip Hap, who was a candidate for the seventh position on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Kip had attended the first meeting, as a member of the public, and had some insightful content, comments to make during that meeting. I think the board unanimously thought that Kip would make a great member of our Sustainability Advisory Committee, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve Edward Kip Hap as a member of our Sustainability Advisory Committee.
And I'll second that motion.
Any comments?
Rick, the explanation you should, could affect you, we send him a letter.
Yes, we will send Kip an email that knows he's been appointed, and Susan will write him a very nice letter.
If he's appointed, we haven't voted yet.
Yes.
Any other comments? Comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye. I might note that one of the things that occurs, or we could do, Marty, and I've seen this on a show called Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me.
I know that.
Well, there you go. And to those who we, you know, not only send them a letter of congratulations that they've been appointed, but that one of the Board of Supervisors would be available to put a special message on their answering machine, and Marty, I would nominate you to do that every time.
You must hear your voice.
I hope there's a position in East Bradford Township for you for a long time.
I have one other thing in front of you that matter. We, as you know, will need to reset the sewer rates for quarter two, our annual reset of sewer rates. We'll be getting data from Aqua around April first. That won't give us enough time at the April second meeting to really have analyzed the data and come up with a recommendation. So, I would ask the board to consider having a, a meeting on the second Tuesday in April, it's April ninth, just for the sole purpose of discussing the sewer rates. It's already advertised, so the board is agreeable with that.
I would agree with that, for a matter of fact, that the next meeting would normally be the final week when we're in a nursery, which means it's gonna be delayed, at least two weeks of work.
We have to, for April fifteenth, so.
I would say, the exception, as recommended.
I'm fine with that, John.
Yep, we're good.
And just on a Sunoco update, we anticipate that Sunoco will begin mobilization for the, for the Quaker, Quaker site, probably tomorrow, a little bit, but apparently, they have seventeen drills available, that'll be setting up in Chester or Delaware County.
Wow.
They have a, so, anyway, they'll be sorted back out.
Rick, with respect to the Quaker site, as I remember, which may be not right, they had taken both the twenty and the sixteen-inch Quaker from Quaker up to the open cut area up in the parking lot. If that's true, if they're putting a drill there, does that mean they're gonna drill from that point back to the Executive Center?
Yes, to mine, I know that they have at least one of the pipes going up north towards the, the grass area, the shine, the sign, yeah, sign. I'm not sure about the second one, but they did, if I remember correctly, they did get the bore through going south down from Quaker to the Executive Center, they did get a pull through, but I don't know if they left the pipe in or if it's been pulled, but they still have to finish that bore, and they still have to do a second bore. And the other thing is, on that same thought, is, as I understand it, they're gonna complete one of the pipelines, get that one done, and then come back and do the second-
Oh, they are now going to change to that?
Well, yeah, this is what they're, originally, they were doing one, then the other, and then, you know, close that site down, but as I understand it now, they're gonna try and get, their goal is to get one of the pipelines done, from one end to the other, and basically, just Chester County and Delaware County, and then they'll come back and do the other.
Rick, when the, when the, whatever pipe it was, didn't they drill from the Executive Center down to Quaker?
No, they drilled from Quaker down to, to the Executive Center.
As well as going up to the open cut.
Yes, yes.
They have enough room there to do that, huh?
Yes.
Interesting.
I'll move into correspondence. First of all, are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? All right, we received a very nice note regarding Mark Miller and his road maintenance team from, and I'm gonna miss the name, from the Florians or the Florins, I'm not su, I apologize for mispronouncing that name, but it was a very kind letter, saying that the efforts this past fall and winter are appreciated, and we agree with that. Mark has done a great, and his crew have done a great job. There's a hundred-foot letter for a communications equipment building at North Chester Road and Weinberry Lane.
Thousand foot, Madam Chairman.
Thousand foot, I'm sorry, thousand-foot letter. This has gone to the property owners. Pico Energy is seeking to modify a conditional use approval from nineteen ninety-seven, adding a ten-by-sixteen-foot building to the site. And Pico proposes to upgrade the existing communications equipment for the facility and house it inside this new building. It will be before the Planning Commission on March sixth, the Conservancy Board on March thirteenth, Planning Commission again on April third, and Board of Supervisors, conditional use hearing on April twenty-third. And, does anyone have anything else?
I just want to, Rick, I want to show, show you how, how, how smart I think I am, which is probably a dumb thing to do, but this is a building, which means that the utility does not have the rate of energy, correct?
No, what does, Texas Eastern has two pipelines that run through this area. In nineteen ninety-seven, somewhere's around here, they made an interconnection with Pico, and they came for additional use, and Pico came, and they put a building in, where they put deodorant in, what that stuff's called, and basically meter what comes off in the Texas Eastern pipeline.
And apparently, they have a landline connection. But Pico wants to upgrade that connection, so they're basically gonna put in a prefabricated ten-by-sixteen building, that'll be between this, the existing building and the road, for the housing communication equipment. Which is trying to get around, which is-
Yes, they have to go through a process.
Correct, yeah, and when you drive down, you won't be able to see it, because it's behind a tree, but you still won't be able to see it, so.
Is there, is there any concerns that we have, that you guys have, staff-wise, with respect to what they're doing, placement, whatever?
No, no, this is, no. We have, the question we had is, what they wanna do is a connection to the internet, and we all have connects to the internet in our house, and it's a small black box in the basement, and, but I guess Pico has a reason why they need to put that box in a ten-by-sixteen building, but that was the only question we had.
Rick, you made reference that they were adding more cap in to the-
Well, that's where they do, they do that to that.
So, that's in the current building?
That's, yeah, the only thing this does is building to house the equipment to allow Pico to talk to that other building back.
So, are, so we get to ask that question in the process, so why do they do the ten-by-sixteen building?
Yeah, I mean, we did, and that's what Pico wants, so.
Are you preparing for tomorrow night, David?
Yes.
Any, any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Your second.
All in favor?
John, I have, I said, something when you turned this off. Nothing to do with the meeting, folks.